Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. If we could call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Thank you very much. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, are there any changes, additions, deletions?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to request that item five A be removed from the agenda at this point and if necessary, addressed at another time. I would also recommend that four A and four B be sent, put on consent. All of you have seen both of these before. I don't really know if it's worth our time and effort for me to essentially lecture you on roles and responsibilities and norms of behavior.
Okay. The agenda has been modified in regard to five A. We don't have a consent, but we could.
I would suggest we modify the agenda at this point and then add consent.
Alright.
And then have them items on consent.
Three A.
Four A.
Four A and four B, Mr. Mayor.
No, he's saying three A for a consent.
Consent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that would include four A?
And four B.
And four B. Alright. Modified cons, or modified agenda.
Make a motion to approve the modified agenda.
And I have a second?
Second, yep.
You made the motion.
Jay made the motion for the approval of the modified agenda.
Modified agenda. So, further discussion, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Now, we're going to move forward then to the new item. Three A, consent agenda, which is four A, annual review of roles and responsibilities. And four B, adoption of the city council norms and behavior. Take it all that council members have read that. Councilmember Lehman?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I have a second. Consent agenda just contains two items.
Question on it. I have a question on it. None of them have changed?
No.
Okay.
No, both the presentation, I changed the date on the presentation, but.
But they're broken out. Why do we even have them? Before we vote then on the consent agenda, then we will read those two items into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Ma, excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Four A is the annual review of roles and responsibilities. And four B is the adoption of the city council norms of behavior.
I have a motion, a second. We've read the consent agenda in the public record. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to four C, two thousand and eighteen city council priorities and work plan. Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, what you have before you is the final tally of what our two thousand and seventeen results were from our last session where we discussed a work plan. I will tell you, there, you know, it's, there's some really significant stuff here and this staff has done a tremendous job in, in moving your last year's agenda forward. The only area of some concern at this point is the lack of movement on the park asset planning process. I believe that that has been energized recently and that you will see some movement on that in the future. I presume that that will still be a part of what you're looking to accomplish in two thousand and eighteen, but it certainly is from an administration standpoint. We can certainly go through this line by line, but I, I, I tried to keep you quarterly updated on where we were on some things and some things we didn't have any movement until the final quarter. But of significance is our, our financial condition, which is just absolutely stellar across the board and Darren's going to get us to a triple A rating in the next couple of weeks, right Darren? Which is something that we, is achievable for us and something that really will cement the financial status of this organization as a whole. Other than that, we've had quite a bit of effort in our land planning area. Once again, a tremendous effort by staff as they've taken a look at the multiple issues that you had had them look at. And were able to bring some stuff together for you and that includes economic development, infrastructure too. Miscellaneous projects, our way, our signage and wayfinding finally got some traction on that. We didn't actually do much with that in two thousand and sixteen. But then in two thousand and eighteen, again, I presume that there will be a lot more movement. A special thank you to the Historical Society for their efforts along the Memorial Park Trail area.
Heritage.
I'm sorry. I knew I messed that up. The Heritage Society, which clearly will make a, a big difference. But then we've got, when it comes to signage and wayfinding, ultimately what we're doing with the downtown and basically allowing people to figure out where they're going. Transparency and communications finally is, is a tremendous step forward, both in our budgetary standpoint. And then also from our communication standpoint where we're consistently trying to speak so people can understand what we're talking about. And, you know, as I've said on multiple occasions, that if we're speaking Spanish and you don't speak Spanish, that's not transparency. So, we have to be able to articulate our goals and, and what we're actually doing in a, in a way that people can understand and not use bureaucracy, bureaucracy speak. So, that's a general overview of our two thousand and seventeen efforts and I and staff look forward to where we're headed in two thousand and eighteen and hopefully presented with an opportunity to look a little farther out. I think that we have a couple of long-term things that we've already pegged, but from our perspective, anything that we can look far, farther out, five years, ten years even, gives us the opportunity to kind of set the stage for where you want us to go. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Seth.
Thank you very much. So, just, Mr. Reynolds was covering some, some points here on the two thousand and seventeen council work plan. We did make some tremendous strides based off our goals we set last year. Just kind of go around the table here. And then on the seventeen in review and then we'll switch to eighteen and see where we want to build and go from there. Councilmember Lehman?
I'm my first.
Okay, good. Did you want me to?
You want, just a review on seventeen? I think, I think low taxes is always good. I think it has multiple benefits. Not only does it help keep housing affordable, obviously when you take out a thirty-year mortgage, you're fixed in if you don't have an adjustable rate. And you know what your payments are and really the only thing that changes that is taxes and insurance, okay? And granted, we're one piece of that tax pie from the Met Council, other taxing district, which is the guy somewhere on the beach somewhere and nobody knows about. Sky County School, City, so there's a lot of different pieces in there, but for our piece, and I wish the rest would do the same. When you sign on to a thirty-year mortgage and you know your payment's a thousand dollars or whatever it is, it's hard to, to maintain affordable housing when that number keeps going up and it's not the mortgage doing it. With that being said, just to briefly touch on some of these things, I also think that low taxes is a good selling tool to get businesses coming to Shakopee when they know, when they can project their ten-year expense from a taxation standpoint with any kind of certainty, looking at the history, saying, you know what? We know it's going to be somewhat flat and not have spikes and valleys. It's much easier from a ten-year business planning standpoint to budget that in. So, I think there's multiple benefits to that. Park, I'm going to hit parks all encompassing because I, I have that in my eighteen plan. And it was in the, I did bring it into the seventeen plan and one of the things that we talked about in seventeen that I, I hope we're going to continue on into eighteen is the last time I looked at this number, which is probably six months, several more, twenty-two percent or higher, I think it was, our, our park spending. Higher than most all around us. And, you know, we've got a lot of amenities here that are great amenities that are low cost. Some are even no cost to us. The DNR Trail along the river will take you to multiple communities, miles, miles, and miles. And it's not our responsibility to maintain, yet it's right here for us to use. So, you know, it's, it's a great, there's a lot of great assets. We've, you know, we've got O'Dowd's and Tholee and Snyder Lake and all these, all these natural features that we're just not capitalizing on. And, you know, here we're, we're going to pay to put in a, a lake when we've got all these lakes. You know, I was hoping that we would look at, and we ran out of time because there was a lot on this list. So, staff has done a great job working through this huge list. We should probably not have such a huge list, but at any rate, the, the park asset fund, and I look at it much broader than that. I don't, it's not just park asset and the replacement of, of parts and parks and maintaining what we have. But it's also the, the, what programming we're offering. Is it being utilized? Are we, are we offering a whole bunch of programs that are minimally utilized or are we offering programs that are, are heavily utilized? So, I, you know, I thi, I think that goes into the equation in my mind. And I'd like to look at the whole piece and I, you know, we kind of had an email from staff earlier this week about that. And I totally agree with that and I, I was really looking forward to that when, when I brought this up in seventeen. So, I'd, I'm going to, I'm going to push hard to put that on our eighteen plan. Not only do we have the opportunity to find out what these treasures are and capitalize on them at a low cost, but we, we've got the opportunity to really have a hard look at our master trail plan and find out where these, these low hanging fruit, if you will, where, where trails don't connect and you can connect them reasonably priced. You know, I know going over the one sixty-nine pedestrian bridge is very expensive. We've been pushed, trying to do that for many, many years, multiple councils. You know, and yeah, that can stay on the radar, but realistically, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. You have to start doing other things still. And I think them key little trail connections are important so that you can actually get from one place to another. But I think another piece of that that's critical is, is the wayfinding signs, not just in town, but on the trails. I mean, the snowmobile clubs have a better marking trail system for their use than we do for any other use on the trails in the summertime. You know, if you're going to take a trail, the DNR Trail and come over across by Memorial Park and go up Saracen or Shenandoah and work your way out to South Bridge or Dean's Lake. If you don't know where these connections are, you don't know which way to go and where it's going to take you to and maybe how far it is. And I, you know, I don't know, I don't think the cost of that is very, very high since we can do that in-house. And I think walking down a trail, coming to a T and knowing that this way is five miles to X and that way is two and a half miles to, to Y. You know, you know where you're going and maybe, maybe there's a little kiosk or something that shows you where you are in town and where this is going to take you to. And maybe you're planning on little, Mary Jane's got to use restroom or something in a little while and this trail takes me close to public restrooms and this one does not. This one's more of a nature type trail. So, it'd be nice to know them things when you're out and about. So, I would like to see totally encompassed in the park area. You know, one, I want to see getting the cost down so that we're more in line with everybody else. But I want to be able to capitalize on the amenities and have the amenities for everybody to utilize. And then I want them when they, when they do want to use them, that they're, they're friendly to them and they know where they're going and so on and so forth. So, I think, and I, I think our programming is always evolving. One year, something might be a hot topic. The next, it's a new wave that comes into town where there's bocce ball or, or whatever. And you just kind of stay up on them and you try to build your, your, your park assets like we did in Tapa where you've got that empty field. Sometimes it's football, sometimes it's something else, sometimes it's soccer. There, I think we're, we're ahead of the game in that respect because we're diversified, if you will, where you can actually use it for multiple things, what the need is. And I think we need to do more of that. But I also think we shouldn't be putting a lot of money into programming that's not, that's underutilized. So, I, I think the whole pie needs to be looked at. Land planning, that's kind of, we're kind of in the middle of that with the comprehensive plan. We'll have to see where that turns out. I did put a highlight by the river, river crossing capacity. It's, you know, we started out with one sixty-nine and we know they're going to restripe it. That's a temporary fix in my mind. If we want to look out thirty years, we're going to need some serious river crossing capacity.
What more, you, you bring this up a lot and I appreciate that and we value that. And I think when we talk to our representatives at the state Capitol as well as national, I mean, we're promoting that. We passed it by resolution. I, I, everybody agrees, but how, how do we get more traction? Or how can we be more effective?
Well, I, I, the fir, the first thing I'm, I'm doing is I'm stepping back from one sixty-nine specifically. Granted, it would be nice if that was increased in capacity, but I think there's some folks out there that are opposed to certain different things. And I think the common denominator to get all these people together is for them to recognize just river crossing capacity in the southwest quadrant. I'll be honest with everybody here. I don't really care where you put it. There needs to be capacity crossing the river.
Another.
Somewhere.
And that, you know, I agree that the expansion of one sixty-nine, I, I don't think we could technically grow out of that aspect. I think the true need is another crossing and where that might be, but it'd be great to get more traction on it and.
Well, Mayor, I think that there's a lot of different pieces. As you all know, these things are happening, but if we really think about it, there's, there's the piece going up to Chanhassen. The, the new bridge out of Shakopee one-on-one in the, in the roundabout. But they're looking at the four lanes up to four ninety-four, two twelve, the old two twelve. If you, if you put the cost of doing that, I don't know what that cost is. But if you start adding some of these costs up, it, does it financially make sense to do a new major crossing somewhere? Or is it make more sense? Because we all know the states, you know, their MinDOT's line has always were, what is it, ten billion dollars and ten years behind what the need is today or something, something along that line. And if that's the case, well then, do we, do we push for the, the restriping and whatever else can be done long-term? There's a long-term option of one sixty-nine after the restriping, which is, that bridge decking was actually made for adding another lane in the middle on both directions. And that might come with the third lane on one sixty-nine from Marshall Road up to the, to the bridge, which is in the, in the works too. But even that itself is not a thirty-year long-term solution. You know, I think it's going to take multiple solutions. You know, we need to be kicking Hennepin County, Carver County and, and Scott County to be kicking MinDOT in, in the two twelve, four lanes up. We need, we need to do a bunch of different things as soon as we can because I think the long-term true fix is going to be a ways out unless, you know, we all saw what came out in the, the infrastructure package. Well, what was that? Little dollars, twenty percent matching funds from everybody else and, and I, you know, I just don't see that kind of money in, in, in the counties and the local government for a major, major infrastructure like that. So, I, we're, we're going to have to take a different look at what some of these solutions are. Although it was nice that they're putting transit dollars toward it because of what you're spending currently on transit is considered money spent on, as a accumulated total. So, if you take the multiple counties in this area that are, and they're transit, transit dollars and use that as a placeholder for twenty percent, it's going to get you a good piece of change. So, so there's a lot of different pieces, but it's, it's one of my, it is a priority. So, how we get there, you know, we're going to have many discussions on that, but it's something I'm going to keep on fighting for. Way, way signs, already kind of covered that. Communications, I think communications are always difficult. They're not only difficult between us and our staff. All of us have different working and different ways of communicating and hell, it's different. It's difficult between a husband and wife at times, so we can't expect it to not be difficult here at times too.
I think it's improved though. I think the city has taken a very active proactive route with their Facebook page and engagement there. I think a lot, they've pumped out a lot more information in the last year than ever before. Also, the couple of department heads have responded in kind to things when and where needed. I think, I think that type of public engagement is, is very important and staff's doing a great job on that.
Well, I think there's.
Budget video.
The budget video?
I think there's two different layers of communications. There's internal communications and then there's the public outreach or, or, and I really like what we did on that side, by the way, where, you know, somebody can get on Facebook or something and, or the service request, I think it's called. Where they can go on there and say, you know, a crack in the sidewalk, take a look at it, whatever. You know, I, I think that's a good idea. We just got to make sure that there's something that tells them that we've received it. We may not be answering right away, but acknowledge that we've received it. And I think it, it says City of Shakopee with a little check mark or something. So, that was a good step in the right direction.
And if I can just touch on that, it's, it's important for everybody to understand, you know, you may be driving down a road and see something that's an issue and, and assume that we know. And the reality is, is that we need everybody's eyes out there to say, oh, hey, we've got an issue here and like, and then, then we can address those issues. And whether it's a road or anything else, but yeah.
So, that's my flyover of two thousand and seventeen.
Mike? Jay?
Well, as far as two thousand and seventeen, some of the highlights, some of these I think we need to bring, bring forward to two thousand and eighteen. But some of the things I want to draw out here, again, the park asset, you know, process, I think we've got to do more on that. I agree with you on that. I think we still need to work on the high-density housing. I mean, it seems like we went through a lot of discussion on that and thought we were getting some places and, and ended up taking a step back. I think we still need to have that discussion and come out with one, one voice on that. Trail connections, I agree with that. I agree with the river crossing, but I, I struggle with how much, I think we need to keep it at the forefront, but I don't think that that's going to be one of our priorities as much as it is our communicating that need is there. I still think we need to work a lot on the riverfront improvements. I think that's an asset that, like you talked about, we already have and just need to look at that in a different light. Economic development, I think, is, is going to be key again with some of our downtown projects and where that goes. Also, you know, for two thousand and eighteen, I'm going to talk about working with the county and their one sixty-nine project and their frontage road. How to work on developing that. I know that's Louisville Township portion of that, but you know, that's something we're going to need to be working with them on to try and get in front of that. Maybe it's another annexation agreement with Louisville or something, but there's going to be some big assets out there that we could utilize and use for economic development. We'll continue the conversation on city property. The signage and wayfinding, I think, is always good. We've done a great job on moving that thought process forward, but we just need to get that kind of put to bed, I guess. We've done a great job, uh, on moving that thought process forward, but, uh, we just need to get that kinda put to bed, I guess. We've done a great job on the finance and the low taxes portion. Some of the other things from twenty seventeen, I wanna congratulate on the transparency and communication, I think we did a great job there. Community engagement's part of that. We haven't really talked about the South Bridge Fire in quite a while, but, uh, I can see that that's gonna be coming up in the future too. So overall, I think the staff did a great job on the twenty seventeen priorities and, uh, um, moving forward. I think, um, some of these we can, you know, add a little more body to, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you. Kathy?
Um, I believe that the staff has done a great job with the twenty seventeen, I agree that the, maybe the list was a little too long in some places and, and others and, um, but I think that we focus on this next year on the things that we kinda missed or, or got holes in them. Um, I still think we continue with the, the financial stability and the low taxes and, you know, I would, um, suggest that part of keeping taxes low too is increasing the densities in certain areas, it's gonna make those houses available and bring those house prices down a little bit, um, or at least within line. Figuring out where fifty by thirty is as far as where scale is with their pro- planning process and how that's gonna affect us, um, that's something to keep in mind too. Great comprehensive plan, I think, I, I like the engagement from the community and the direction that that's going right now. Obviously, we're, we're gonna be going over some of that tonight too, um, trail connections. The downtown was the other thing that I would like to bring up, nobody, we, we didn't really talk about that yet, but I think the projects down there have done, uh, made that area really nice, um, refurbishing those sidewalks and, um, the Chief Shakopee statue, of course, um, is adding to that. And hopefully another statue downtown, um, if we can get that moving forward, is continue that process into eighteen. And then, uh, working on our city pro- property as far as make, letting that access and strategy and where to take that process as we mar- start marketing more of that. And then, um, just lost my screen, but, um, yeah, last page. And, um, so then, oh, and the, the wayfinding, um, I really like what the, um, Heritage Society has come up with their plan and it's exciting to see that kinda moving forward. And, um, let's see, the code enforcement and transparency, I think communication will always be one of those things that works on. I think we've been doing a much better job, um, now it's utilizing more of what we have, uh, more information. And that, I think that, we'll talk about that too, as people are asking for more information, as we start giving, they start wanting more. So, um, that's, process is always in great review. Like you said, too, the South Bridge Park, South Bridge Fire, um, figuring out where that's going as we move forward into eighteen.
Good. Mike?
As far as affordable housing, I mean, uh, it's, everybody's definition of affordable is different. You know, if you wanna build a new house and make it affordable, it's next to impossible. You know, you got three hundred thousand dollars stuck in a thousand square foot house on a new lot.
Affordable housing on our plan.
Did I interrupt you?
I'm just asking.
Alright, continue. You know, as far as high-density housing, um, I'm not in favor of any more of it. I mean, uh, let's see where the Dorn project goes. You know, basically, uh, stuck my neck out on that one, we'll see where it, what happens with that. Transportation, expanding one sixty-nine's, uh, ability to take more is gonna be very expensive, I don't know. Other than re-stripping it, you know, once you get into Eden Prairie, you're gonna end up having to buy a lot of businesses out. Forty-one makes a whole lot more sense, uh, that or a brand-new river crossing. You know, they can reconnect somewhere else. According to Councilman Lehman, uh, the, uh, fourth leg of the roundabout will help a lot going up through Chan Hassen with four lanes. That'll, uh, you know, majority of it's done, it's just a hill there that needs to be done, but that's the most expensive part of the project also. Let's see, you know, the park that, uh, you know, the parks that we have are great, uh, I think we've done a lot with building them. I don't know that we've done a lot with, uh, planning for, you know, maintaining all of this. I mean, it's build, 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 but, uh, you know, somewhere along the line, these things are gonna have to be maintained and rebuilt and re-roofed and, you know, reheated and there's gonna be a lot of maintenance going on there. As far as your way signs, it's a good idea, but you gotta remember the little vandals and they like to tear them up and burn them down and, you know, whatever they can do to destroy, they will, so there'll be a lot of maintenance there as I can see it. That's it for me.
Thank you, I, um, I don't know, when we received this, uh, updated city work plan that we did and the highlights on the red, I, uh, I think, uh, city staff and this council deserves a lot of credit for working through a lot of these issues that have been accomplished, um. I think, uh, you know, it just speaks volumes of what, what we've all done collectively in the last year. And, uh, can go through every point here a lot, but, uh, I think, uh, the downtown redevelopment, uh, aspect in last year was, was great. I think the orderly annexation agreement, um, while that's complete, um, you know, progress should be made in that moving forward and I think build on that, the whole west end plan. Excited for an opportunity to see, may we'll learn some more about the old mall area, um, being redeveloped. I think that for housing, um, you know, housing that's affordable. And you're correct, it's all, the definition is, is different for every, everybody, but a hous- hous- housing that's affordable. I think that in two thousand sixteen, I think we had about rounding up numbers, I think we had about fifty starts. You know, I think in two thousand eighteen, we should see that number, uh, at about two fifty. And I think that's a, uh, we're seeing that comeback in housing in all different styles, single families, we're seeing some apartments. I think that's all good diversification of style of housing for, for Shakopee. I think one thing that we do need to work on that was on our list that not a lot accomplished was, uh, uh, the fire station and that opportunity for a partnership there if that moves forward. But, um, that whole east end, south bridge, um, for fire rating and response time, um, I think's important for our community. So I think, uh, really, whole and whole, two thousand seventeen, uh, we can all tip our hat to a lot of accomplishments and listening kinda to what in the review of it and even the, the, the information that, what you'd like to see moving forward is almost roughly the same, more of it in some cases. And some things that need to be, that weren't accomplished, need to be brought forward. So for two thousand eighteen, uh, we can go around the table or, or just, I wrote down low taxing, taxation, everybody, low tax rate.
I think we can all agree on that.
You know, I think that what goes hand in hand in that a little bit is, is, uh, tax capacity and trying to find ways to increase the tax capacity. Cause as the tax pa- capacity grows, the ability to keep the tax rate low, um, I think we have great finances. Thank you, Darren.
Should we put that triple A rating out there as a?
I, you know.
Let's get, let's make him shoot for the top like a quadruple A or something.
Triple A plus?
Quadruple A.
Parks, I'm hearing a lot about parks, so parks is a lot of different areas, maintenance, uh, building out of other things. I think, I think for me, and I think, uh, you know, we saw some information on, on the Lions Park discussion. The, the overall expense percentage as a budget, um, is high compared to other metro cities. So, you know, when I talk to my peers, they're at, even the Eden Parrys or the Chan Hassens, you know, they're at, they're at fourteen percent, they're at fourteen and a half, uh, fifteen. We have a lot and I think we need to look at that long-term maintenance. I also think we should think about usage, someone brought up programs that are, you know, are we getting the usage for our dollars? And so this, this event, this program, this asset costs this much, but we're getting this much use out of it. And then at some time, we're gonna have to replace that and how we, how we doing that? So I, I think the overall park expense should be looked at with usage. So we're always, let's build it and they'll come, we have some repurpose aspects, but to try to increase its uses, which is good. But I do think we should look at the overall expense and what we're doing well and figure out maybe what we're not doing well and try to bring efficiencies to it. One thing that's been on our item for a couple of years that we're gathering data and, and as we move forward is the community center expense and, you know, that should be included too, we're gonna come by August, we'll have a full year. And, and try to figure out where we're at at that and, uh, uh, try to minimize those expenses, obviously. And we've been doing a good job on the revenue side, um, but maybe, maybe look at that expense side as well and just make sure that those expenses are done well. Yeah, we're gonna see, you're right, we're gonna see where Canterbury goes here, a lot of momentum for that, uh, fire station, uh, downtown. I think it was interesting, participated in the envision Shakopee and, uh, you know, some of the stuff that the residents are saying is exactly what we're saying. For the most part, uh, revitalize downtown, uh, transportation option, park connections and, uh, you know, we have a trail that goes, you know, ten blocks and then you can't find it, you find your way or it's a missing link. I think, uh, you know, obviously even the residents ensure long-term financial stability, I think we're doing that and still keep a sharp eye on that ball. So those are kinda some of my comments in regard to this, you can go back around.
Sure, I'll jump on the, uh, park part of it and, uh, you had mentioned.
Go down your whole list for eighteen.
Oh, okay, sure. Well, we had talked, I think we can all agree on the, the low taxes and fiscal stability and some of those things that, uh, we can continue on with and leave those on. I, I think we do need to, uh, take a look at, uh, affordable housing and, and when you're, some people do, you know, look at that term as an issue. But, uh, I guess in the comp plan here of the, what's been fleshed out so far, the availability of quality of housing options in their, our community. And I think that's a great, uh, thing to put on our twenty eighteen goals. You know, just the availability and opportunities to, to have different range of housing. I think we need to, uh, look at how we attract the high-paying jobs, I think that's important. How we get there, uh, you know, there's many different ways. I think we need to continue looking at our city property. And I, and I mentioned before, but working with the county on, uh, that new area that they're developing with the roads on, along one sixty-nine up to forty-one, that whole project. I think that's, uh, out there a little farther for long-term, but, uh, I think that's something we can start planting some seeds on, I think that should be out there. I think we should, you know, continue looking at the high-density housing. I know that's been, and we can hold back on the wait and see how Dorn goes, but I think that, uh, that's something that's gonna continue to come up. As we have the, the housing need, the, the rental rates go up and it makes our housing stock less and less affordable. Because people are raising rents and values are going up. As far as some things to bring forward, I think we do need to continue on discussion about the South Bridge Fire. And, uh, you know, where that goes, partnerships are good. You talked about parks and I wanna bring back, back to that, but, uh, we've had some conversations, we've had that warming house go down twice. Now you've seen some emails about the public and private partnerships with the Lions Club and the Hockey Association. Now, to me, that's a win-win, I mean, when we can get what we need for a lower cost and we have partners coming in that want to help keep that cost down and actually help pay for it, um, that makes it a lot more appealing. I know there's some strings attached and we can work through that, there's part, room for negotiation, but, uh, when you get those partners out there, I think that's, that's where we need to start really focusing and looking at it harder, so. As far as some of our parks, I think one of the issues we have with higher costs of parks is we're not a built-out city, we're still developing some parks. We're still paying for some of the assets we have, but we're still acquiring and building out parks. And I, and as far as Quarry Lake Park, I still think, uh, we need to continue on with the plan to get the, the walkways and the, and the amphitheater-type seating in there, I think that's important. We are an entertainment community and I think we need to work with the water ski club to make that a better asset. If we're gonna put that kinda infrastructure in, uh, we should have, you know, expect a little more marketing out of them. I think we should expect a little more of an entertainment venue if we're gonna put that infrastructure in, I think we should get what we can out of it.
But I just, Jay, I appreciate it, counselor, that, uh, we're kinda on the priorities and I know you wanna speak to that, but.
It is a priority, so.
The next item is, uh, we will discuss.
We will talk about that, but I think parks in, in the discussion needs to continue on. And I don't see a, an issue with trying, you know, if we don't get to that triple A bond rating, you know, that's, we don't get there. But I think we can put that as a priority and a goal.
Mayor, can I just make one comment? The, uh, Counselor Whiting, you talked about the long-term getting from Lou- uh, Jackson to Louisville. The plan that I saw with Scott County from Jackson is making the frontage roads on the south side because of the power station's on the north. And it works over to, uh, well, just past the, the trailer park, so.
I think it goes farther down to forty-one, this is a future plan, yeah.
Eventually, yes, so I think that plan is already there on the south side and it's gonna be difficult to make it go anywhere on the north unless the power station is moved and I don't think that's gonna happen.
No, I'm thinking about the south side.
But, uh, that, that plan's already there, so it's just a matter of when do we get to a point through Jackson Township to where we start discussions with Louisville? And I can tell you today Louisville's not really interested in talking to us, but at some point that, that will be.
Right, well, I can see us starting to think about the infrastructure down there and planning for that and looking and having those discussions and, uh.
And we know that there's a future sewer treatment center out, out in that area somewhere. We saw that on the map and, and the Jackson Township discussion. So, I, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, the sewer side is covered, we know where that's going. Spuck is on top of the plans moving outward, it's just, this area is it.
I think a portion of that is Jackson, but I think a portion of that down towards forty-one is Louisville.
Right, right.
So that's why I think some of those discussions need to at least start, uh, getting framed anyway.
And, and I think the, the beginning of that discussion and we're probably getting off topic, but I think the beginning of that discussion is, is with Scott County because they're the lead on, uh, jurisdiction over the properties that aren't in annex- annexation agreements.
Right, no, I agree.
So, I, we're, just wanna make sure that you, you know, right where we're at.
I wrote, working with the county on their one sixty-nine transition. Their, you know, their frontage project and I think, uh, it could be.
Just wanna put you at even.
I said it's long-term.
We're a little, we're a little further.
I said long-term.
Than what the average citizen would know and, and that's a good thing.
And we would certainly need, as we move forward down and, you know, if any annexation there, we wanna talk about, uh, commercial industrial land. And as we come around the bend and, and down to forty-one, um, and even across on the north side, um, over by the old mall there. But, um, you know, we will, we would continue to, to use our annexation agreement as a guide. And the county does have, uh, some of the road infrastructure ideas, you know, where they want some things to be aligned. The Met Council does play a role in where the sewer capacity would be. But we, as much as I'd like to, and I, you know, I like to think long-term too, uh, in thirty years, will we be there? Yeah, probably, how do we start the planning? I'm sure that, you know, the Louisville just seems like a long way away, um, because we haven't even gotten through the Jackson and I agree. But, um, I think there really for Shakopee, a lot of, uh, true opportunity in a lot. I think there really for Shakopee, a lot of uh, true opportunity in a lot of our future growth in the next five or ten years. Right with the, with our annexation agreement with uh, Jackson Township. And if we set it upright, we can, uh, very successful. So, um, more or less, Kathy?
Did you wanna finish, as long as you started?
I was just making a comment, I'll go down my list whenever I'm told to go ahead and go.
Do you wanna go?
Yeah.
Um, so I actually, you know, thought about this and as I'm looking at this comprehensive plan when I got here, I'm like, it's pretty much everything on my list. And you know, it's the financial stability, um, you know, adding the triple A bond rating as um, one of Darren's priorities that he'd like to shoot for. Um, I, I did like their um, description of the quality housing, I think that's important um, as people having that input in what is built. Um, I think there's a lot of things that are being built, it's not necessarily good for everyone. And you know, and they gave, you know, a couple of example, examples in that seniors who want more at one level living. And the families with, you know, kids that want more bedrooms versus um, you know, more living rooms, that types of things. You know, downtown revitalization, we, we talked about continuing that process. We worked on um, the east end and now it's more of the west end and downtown that we really haven't addressed some of that. And uh, the transportation, obviously, and communication, those were both on there. Park and trail, which we're gonna start talking more about pro- park projects, I, I, from the emails that have gone back this week, I'm sure that's um, on Mr. Reynolds' agenda as well. And then the, the other thing that I had um, that didn't kinda get addressed with the mayor and I, you know, kinda witnessed it firsthand doing the community, the interviews. There's, you're kinda redoing the process and we talked about um, the intakes maybe need to be done a little different. Um, on the, on the user end versus on our end, and um, I think that Mr. Reynolds is aware of that and staff, and we talked about that a little bit. Changing up that process and then now it's communicating what that process is, is when the vice chairs come in and that they know what their roles are and-
Well, I concur, I think the process is much better, I think some of the details of, you know, this is personally some low hanging fruit, but um, just the application, we used to use standardized questions and for all the boards and some of those questions I felt weren't pertinent to one board or another. So maybe we would have some questions that are a little more specific to the board that they're applying to. Also, uh, more, just a brief paragraph or two of what each board does, I think, in asking folks if they've ever attended a meeting or ever watched one, the majority said no. And then, uh, what do you think your role was or it would be? And I, you know, some of them were a little off the mark compared to what the board did. Um, so if we can put out a little more information of, of what a board-
Expectations.
Specific board does uh, for our community and that active civic involvement, so that would be good.
Yeah, and I think that's what I heard after the interviews and I, obviously because you and I did the interviewing, um, I heard that more and more is that on their end, um, it's a little cumbersome, it's like when you go and apply to the boards and um, that process itself is a little, is a little bit cumbersome, so.
Thank you, Mike.
How many applications for how many positions do we have for the boards?
I think we had thirty-two applicants and I think there were nine openings.
I can, I can get that information.
I think roundabout, but I felt we had a um-
We had a good sampling, yep.
The last couple of years have been pretty good, um, you know, it was, I know there's been times when we can't fill. We do have a board that uh, uh, is not full, Bicycle Committee. There has been some discussion about either looking at that board as a whole and or looking, I think they have seven members. Maybe shrinking that to five. And also looking at, at trying to maybe even broaden the name a little bit. We, a lot of the trail connection, that was brought up, um, the signage, that, that, maybe that committee could be defined a little better way that they're looking at that, and it may sound like Park and Rec, but um, just a little, a di- little different wording of the, of the committee might give it a little broader uh, flavor and uh-
We could feed them that project.
Huh?
We could feed them, that committee that project, too.
Right, so. Okay. Mike, two thousand and eighteen?
For two eighteen, I think Quarry Lake could be marketed quite a bit as-is. I mean, outdoor weddings aren't uh, you know, not super popular, but there's a number of people that do an outdoor wedding, it's a beautiful scenic setting. You know, a lot of the stuff is in there, so you know, they could make some use of that. Uh, Envision Shakopee, what I got out of that for twenty eighteen is everybody wants more and more and more, but at my table was who's gonna pay for it and nobody at my table wanted to pay for it. You know, so how do, how do we come up with this? I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's an unrealistic uh, thought that, you know, you can get more and not pay anything for it, it's gonna have to be paid for by someone. As far as the rec board or the rec part of our bit city, I think a lot more tracking needs to be done on all these different programs. And uh, you know, if the ones that just aren't being used, eliminate them. I mean, it doesn't make sense, spend a lot of money for four people, I mean, the, the bang for your buck just is not there. You know, I'm kinda curious, you know, with the west end uh, being the optimum end now of the city, because I believe the east end is pretty much built out. I think everything that isn't built is tribe land and, you know, we've got no control over that. So as far as the fire station, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be also looking at the west end because we're gonna need fire coverage out there very soon. And uh, you know, before the land prices go through the roof, you know, make some plans as to where we're gonna put one and maybe pick up some land at today's prices instead of ten years down the road. And affordable housing, it's, I just, I don't know, you know, my definition of affordable just is not achievable because people don't have three hundred thousand dollars to afford a hun- a house. And even the older houses in, in old part of town are going for between two fifty and three. So, you know, it's, I, I don't know where we crack that nut. I mean, the new houses are, are way out of reach, even at a, you know, at the lowest end possible. So taxes is the only way I can see to make houses affordable and that's just keep them down as much as we can. We've done a fairly decent job, we need to do a better job. That's my thought.
No, no, thank you. Matt?
Well, I'm gonna start on the, on the recruiting high-paying jobs. You know, and I'm gonna kinda go back and give you my two cents over a period of time. It would seem that we, we had a business subsidy policy that gave tax incentives to lower-wage jobs and now we have a need for lower, lower-priced houses, when in fact it should be the opposite. If, if we had a business subsidy policy that would reward high-paying jobs, you'd, you'd have a market for, for the regular entry level and middle and upper-end homes. I, I, I don't have a problem giving tax incentives to good-paying jobs.
Well, we've adjusted our policy though.
We did, I, I still don't think it's in the right area, but it's, it's an improvement.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, when I'm talking about high-paying jobs, I'm talking about wages where these people, that the wage pays a, a livable wage. Where there's, they're not needing any kind of, of government assistance in any way, shape or form and they, they're-
But what is that wage for you?
Well, you know, and there's experts that can tell you that, it's a pers-
I'm asking you.
Two hundred percent of federal poverty or two, two hundred and seventy-five percent of federal, federal poverty, I think it was at one time. Like I said, I don't have a problem with tax incentives for the right reason. I, I have a problem with taking tax incentives and creating a problem with low-wage jobs and then turn around and now subsidizing the housing too. It's a double hit, you know, so-
I think we've adjusted our policy, maybe we wanna look at it again, I-
So-
You haven't had any take for Zebra's?
Um, not of, not of lately, I think our marker is at nineteen dollars an hour and so many jobs and et cetera. You know, the Emerson's, the EnTrust data cards, the, you know, even Shutterfly is way and exceeded what, you know, they got underneath the other plan, but they've actually, they would exceed our current plan.
Well, and, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to pick on any businesses. I, I mean, there's a place for the lower-wage jobs also, I'm not knocking one or the other. I'm saying that if you look at the balance, we have a lot of service-oriented jobs. Whether they're, you know, and it just wouldn't be-
I, I think-
It's not right to, to target individual companies, but we have an, an abundance of, of lower-wage jobs. That, that doesn't, that's not a bad thing necessarily, I'm saying that when you look at it as a balance, you wanna, you wanna have some balance and I think our balance is a little off.
Well, I, I disagree, I think that we have a-
Well-
Tremendously diverse and inclusive uh, workforce or impu- we have, you know, how many jobs do we have in our community? It's a, a big number, um, but I, I do think that we have good balance. That's actually what makes our community great, actually financially, is the commercial industrial base that has not just one tied to one industry that rises and falls on the economy every ten years. We have a diverse enough uh, business uh, uh, community that, that can stand on its own, we have a premier hospital. And, and those jobs, and yes, we have some blue-collar type.
Mayor, the fact is, we have some very large employers, very large employers that pay lower wages, okay? It's just a fact, you can split the hairs all you want, but if you want me to sit here and name them, I can do that, okay? Mystic Lake, huge employer, biggest in Scott County, a lot of them jobs are lower wage. Yes, they have some high-paying jobs, but the majority are lower wage jobs, okay? Valley Fair, seasonal, uh, Amazon, lots of jobs, not your high-wage jobs. Um, and the list goes on and on, so, fact is, we've got a balance issue. Jay pointed out that he wanted to recruit high-paying jobs, I actually agree with him on this, okay?
We all, we all would like to do that.
Okay, um, this is something left over from seventeen, I, I support, I still support that moving into eighteen.
Okay.
So I didn't wanna get into a big ol' spat over one issue, I just wanted to point out what, what I'm looking at for eighteen. Signage, wayfinding is on my list, communications is always on my list, um, low taxes is always on my list. Parks, overall inclusive, the whole ten yards, whether it's maintenance, connections, uh, small projects, usage, long-term park asset, long-term capital replacement cost, the whole ten yards is, uh, is what I'd like to see looked at in the Parks Department. Granted, it's not gonna be something that's probably gonna get done in one year, but we could probably get a chunk of it done because we're already doing it with some of the uses at, at the community center and stuff. So, um, that's on my radar. The uh, river crossing, I, I think we're gonna end up pressuring the counties into up to Chan-Hassan, up to four ninety-four. And uh, you know, I think there were projects that we can probably get done in a reasonable amount of time. So that's probably one of the things I'm gonna be working on. Affordable housing, I think the market is supposed to drive that and, and I think we're back to, we have a lot of lower-wage jobs that need lower-wage living, and we created that problem. Not we, but a council created that problem, um, and now we gotta figure out how to address it. And uh, I'd like to, I'd like to address it as much as possible on the free market, whether it's small lots or, uh, you know, we need to look at what kind of burden are we placing on developers? When we, you know, you can use a commercial development as an example, when you wanna put all kinds of stuff in the middle of a parking lot and raise the, the price of building this development substantially. Under the parking lot drainage and, and middle of the aisle greenways and sidewalks that nobody uses and these types of construction cost and, and regulation builds up the price. Now, what are we doing on the residential side that's driving, regulation-wise, that's driving up the price of, of housing? I mean, I know, you know, you talk to any builder, which I know all of us here have, they come into, and it, it's not just Shakopee, it's every government layer in, in, in the country. You come in and you get a permit for this and a permit for that and a review for that and this is that and you pay for this and you pay for that and you got a hundred thousand dollars invested in a house and you haven't even moved a piece of dirt yet, you know? How do we-
Fees and regulations.
How do we, how do we deal with this and make it so that they can actually build something that's affordable to the end user uh, without lining their pockets?
Can you touch on that one?
Absolutely.
I, well, I would, we talk about high-density and the workforce housing, which is not the subsidized section eight housing. It's that workforce housing, it's still federal dollars that come in and they have to apply for that. But I think we could work with, uh, and it's the Met Council, I think they get involved in some of those conversations too.
Keep that on the conversation.
I'll, I'll keep, I'll tone that down, but these are some of the questions that you've had a hard time with in the past.
Well, and, and I don't like to see tax dollars used for it. I mean, it's, it's my tax dollars-
Well, then if we wanna reduce regulations or fees and some of these organizations or developers have come forward and then they want this fee cut in half or something, and then, wow, boy, that will impact our long-term plan and then we-
I'll, I'll only give you a great example, we use a state building code uh, as a guideline. We're not required to do that, we just do it because we can make it much more expensive for everybody to build. Now, I understand there's some safety issues in, in how you build something, but a lot of these state guidelines are, are ridiculous.
To get a grant, this was, this came up at scale last week and Senator uh, Pr- or Senator Pratt and actually, Michael Leake spoke about it, cause he held up the state code book and talked about when a, when a developer wants to do housing that's affordable and to get applied for those grants at the Met Council or the credits at the feds and that, they have to build their housing to this standard. Bedrooms have a minimum, while the developer's gone, if I have to build it out to this, my cost is gonna be X and then you want it to be uh, housing that's affordable and that, that's tough. Maybe the, it does have to start at the state level and go, boy, if you want something that's a little affordable, maybe you, the regulations that a countertop has to be fourteen feet long and that every foot adds a, an expense to it, or a bedroom has to be so many square feet. And I know there's like, you know, public health and safety and all that and that, but they were talking about the, the book that creates the expense to get a developer to come forward and put something on it and then try to earn a credit. And they say, wow, it's almost a catch twenty-two. Um, so, um, and Senator Pratt spoke to that, um, about that uh, state guideline minimum standards and maybe that has to, and I don't know if that's a city discussion. But maybe, and we talk about uh, single levy, level townhomes. Those are very popular, but you have to remember that a single-family or a single-level townhome or rambler takes up a lot of land and that gets expensive. All these factors play a big role, um, waiving a fee, the requirements of, of standardized housing, housing codes. Uh, how do we, how do we work that through where, or smaller lots? I know smaller lots were a big thing ten years ago, I know up in Chaska they have some off of forty-one. I haven't been up there lately to see now if they're ten years old, are they holding up or people-
We have some in Dean Lake, too.
Yeah, yes, we do. So, but I, I go, and my last comment on this is, I struggle about what is affordable housing or housing that's affordable. And when we do our tax uh, prep work uh, for the year, Darren puts up a slide of the sixteen thousand homes that we have here in our community and each, and has them by value and has a number and a percentage. Forty percent of our housing stock in our community is priced at two hundred thousand dollars. Fifty-one percent in total-
Which is affordable, by the way.
Is priced at in the old part of our town or over a townhome or- Is priced at, in the old part of our town or over a townhome or, um, is priced at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Granted, this is older stock, but it, to me, is that, is that affordable? Um, it does take a down payment. Because of the recession here nine years ago, some of those standards actually have come up because they were deemed too low, and interest expense, interest income, uh, or interest payment only on mortgages got folks in trouble as well. So, it's kind of a combination. I think actually we have a lot of housing variety in our community. Um, we talk about how to unlock some of that and free that up. Uh, maybe some of these new style homes, uh, on the west end, maybe some of the apartment, uh, concepts that are coming forward. Maybe someone wants to move out of that older stock and then free up that, that older stock that seems, that is deemed affordable.
Maybe the single level.
Huh? Well, they're single.
Did I get all my points in before we move on? Um, trail connections.
Yeah.
Small trail connections, not the big ones, but the small ones.
Small ones.
So, I've got, let's see, ta- taxes, parks, overall review of the parks.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna hit that again in the next one when we go on to, thing individually. Trail connections, river crossing, capacity. High paying jobs, signage, wayfinding, communications. And I think the, uh, South Bridge Fire is gonna just kinda work itself through the process.
Um, alright. Uh, this is good input, I think, staff. I mean, I, uh, I have same, the same as most everybody else. Uh, I would like to put in an effort for the Reverend Pond effort here in two thousand and eighteen. Um, downtown's doing pretty well, continue on that. Uh, the city, uh, hall site is paramount. Build on the west end, reduce park and rec, uh, expenditures pers- as a percentage, uh, riverfront development. Um, housing growth, and I think growth comes in all different aspects. See where Canterbury goes. I think the fire station, the natural way, I think, uh, we haven't really, we did a, uh, study about response time. But continue the more active discussion with the, uh, Shakopee, Midwakken Sioux community. Find out where our strengths are, find out where our challenges are, and, and try to make we, you know, we talk about buying land, we already own land, um, from that. So, I think, uh, for the general, I think we've built some consensus on probably ten to fifteen points here. Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir. And, um, what I'll do, like I've done in the past, I'll put these all together in a big list and kinda break them out. Uh, get them to you, bring them back for discussion. If there's objections, you know, we can work through those at that point. Understand that I'll do my best to, to try to work through those definitional issues, I guess I'll say, as somebody looks at one definition and somebody looks at another. So, please review that, and then we can bring it back for discussion.
I, I have a question.
Go.
You've got a list there of priorities for eighteen written before we got here.
Yeah, this is my personal list that I.
Right, and that's what you just read off, right?
Yep, and they match some of what we've been talking about.
Okay, so what you read off is what we agreed on or what you have on your list from prior?
He prepared.
What, what's that?
It's the stuff he prepared.
Right. Isn't it supposed to be what we as a group wanna put on?
Well, I didn't recap what we all discussed, but if you want to, low taxation.
Well, see, that's.
Park percentage.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You went down a list that you made, and he was gonna put your list down as our priorities.
I don't think that's what he said.
No, no.
No? Okay.
He's been taking notes here.
No, I've, I've, I've got notes on what everybody said.
Okay.
I will take and I will cross-reference those. I'll bring them forward.
Okay.
Put a list. Uh, if there are issues with that list, we can discuss them at that point. And then, uh, ultimately, if it needs to be refined, we'll go back and refine it, but ultimately bring it back and then have it blessed by council as our twenty eighteen work plan. Um, I would, uh, you know, there are some, those bigger, uh, long-range projects, uh, one sixty-nine crossing or crossing in general, one of them. You know, I'll try to, uh, break those in, in the, uh, the west end fire station and other, uh, just for things to look at. And again, this is our starting list.
For the long-term kind of.
For, for our long-term pieces and identify those as well.
Nate?
Dre?
Uh, you, you had a definition of the housing, um, 'cause, you know, I'd used, uh, housing that's, you know, options for the community need, and, and you talked about affordable housing. What was your definition again?
I, I, I struggle with this too, because I think what is affordable, to everybody, it's different. I said a housing, I, I use a term that I've thought about a lot, that is, uh, housing that, that is affordable. And it, it's kind of a loose thing.
It kinda, it was more broad than looking at our housing stock.
I, our housing stock, I believe we have a wide range of housing stock, and we put the numbers together by percentages, numbers, and values every year on our taxes. And it, it's in a slide.
Well, I think I could agree with you as far as the point that we bring forward is, is, uh, keeping a, a range of housing stock. I think that's a good way to, uh, to communicate it, I think.
Okay, fair enough.
I think you're right.
Mike?
Well, uh, if memory serves me, on the South Bridge Fire Station, we do have some grant money that we received, but if we, if we use that grant money, we can't partner with Midwakken?
Well, we have some grant money, but we also have an earmark for the bonding at the state legislator that, you know, we're gonna continue to push.
Yep.
Um, so there are some, that's an opportunity. If we could get that bonding, uh, obviously with that, there'd be some challenges as, and, right?
I, I think it's safe to say that that whole area is fluid. Uh, obviously, uh, if we can partner with, uh, the Midwakken Sioux community, that would be a great, uh, uh, both from an operational standpoint and from a financial standpoint. In building the building, you know, we, we, we put that placeholder, if you will, in, in this year's bonding bill. Uh, we did not expect it to ma- make the governor's list. It did not make the governor's list. Uh, but the reality is, one of the things that we have to recognize is that we are a wealthy community, believe it or not, uh, and that we are very financially stable. So, uh, uh, I'm still gonna continue to fight, uh, on the bonding piece, because those are tax dollars that if somebody else gets, why in the world can't we put our hand out as well? So, um, uh, you know, but we do have some checks against us when it comes to the bonding piece, but that's okay. We'll, we'll continue to.
But we never ask, so.
And that's the other piece. We've never really asked, you know, uh, you know, some places have asked for money for community centers and received it. Uh, uh, you know, ice arenas and received it, uh, uh, police stations and received it. Uh, well, you know, we haven't asked, but we're gonna ask now. And, uh, you know, if, if the money is out there, then we should, we should have the opportunity to, to ask just like everybody else.
Okay. Um, more, less, thank you.
You know, you would think that the Met Council and the state would see the amount of growth happening in the southwest metro area and say, gee, we need to build some roads in this area, you know?
They, they claim they already built a road, one sixty-nine.
That, that road was built in ninety-six.
Well, it only took thirty years to get it.
How much growth happened between ninety-six and now?
Lots.
And did that road get any wider?
Oh.
Okay, maybe we should water it or some, wait, no, that didn't work either.
Um, actually, I, I'll just put in this plug, I drive all over the metro area. Shakopee, people say it's congested, and drive to Maple Grove at four thirty in the afternoon. Try to go over to Maplewood through Spaghetti Junction at four o'clock in the afternoon. Try to take your single car down thirty-five W and get to Burnsville at four o'clock in the afternoon. Shakopee has a couple ways in, a couple ways out. Um, I am a commuter, so is my wife. She takes transit, but she's in it. I think, I think we, we have it pretty good, but can it be improved? You know, we talk about the striping of the bridge. Well, great, well, it's still two lanes, two lanes on either. So, um, you know, four ninety-four, the belt line, six ninety-four, used to be two lanes, and then they'd have these off and on ramps that would appear like three lanes, and everybody get them, and then they're trying to cut back in 'cause it, it's an off ramp, they wanna stay on the freeway. We just took eight years, the state, Minda, took about eight years to work its way all the way around the belt line, so it's three solid, uh, lanes all the way around, not counting those off and, off and on ramps. So, um, but that's enough on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I would agree with you, being a commuter, so.
Alright. Uh, four D, park projects included in the two thousand and eighteen comp capital improvement plan, uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Initially, uh, when we had put this workshop together, we kinda wanted to take a look at these particular projects, and we actually have Memorial Bridge. It was also one of those that we were thinking about as well, to get some direction from council on, um, what the future was for these particular projects. The reality is, if something is in the compri- excuse me, if something is in the, 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 uh, the capital plan, uh, then, then we're, 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 we're going to start spending money to achieve those particular objectives over time. In, in retrospect, and, and after, uh, uh, we put this together and, and Steve put the memo together, we took a hard look and, and, and both Steve and, and Nate and, and, and others, uh, really, and, and after talking with me, we all, we all believe at this point, we need to take a pause and take a step back and take a look at our planning process when it comes to parks. There are many ways that we can plan parks. We've had a system in place essentially that, you know, uh, a development comes in, we put a park in. Uh, that may or may not be a good, uh, uh, a, a good process for the city to follow. But what we wanna do is to take a look at the options, uh, much like Counselor Lehman stated, really break down usage of what we currently have, really get down to bring some metrics into you, some actual data of things. Talk about how much it costs, talk about how much it costs per person, uh, and bring that before you, and then take a broader look at our park planning process as a whole. There's some real opportunity, but as I've said repeatedly since I've been here, and this is something that Counselor Lehman has also touched on, everything we build will have to be replaced. The Warming House is a perfect example of that. You know, I don't know what it cost when it was first put in there, but it didn't cost five hundred thousand dollars. Well, you know, uh, obviously that was what, uh, and obvi- we got some other things that we're working on that at the ti- at the current time. But, uh, you know, that, that came before this, uh, body on two different occasions, five hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred thousand, and, and, uh, you know, that's just a lot of money for something like that. And, uh, so, we really wanna get our, our, our collective arms around the park planning process, make sure it is indicative of the organization as a whole. Maintenance needs to be taken into consideration, construction, uh, 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 operational expenses all need to be taken into consideration, and, and not simply build to build and, and, uh, you know, do a cookie cutter, uh, certain type of park in each, each place. Uh, sometimes, you know, you have those signature pieces. Frankly, Quarry Lake could be a signature piece. That's, that's an expensive signature piece, but again, you know, we want, we wanna be able to take it, take a step back and take a look at all those. So, uh, you know, Steve's available, we can certainly dive into these particular projects, but I think ultimately what we, what we wanna do is just, is to give us some time, uh, to really analyze parks as a whole, and then come back with some ideas and thoughts, and then, uh, and this would be a multi-phase process, as we bring stuff to you and try to get some ideas as to whether or not we're, we're looking in the right areas and, and thinking the same things that council as a group would like us to consider.
So, we have a couple items for discussion here, but now we're talking about more of long-term, uh, concept, which may play a role in the decision of certain things. So, kinda for our council, we can go around the table, but it, um, you know, discuss these items or, I guess, try to develop a game plan that, uh, would, would get more information over the next six months from staff.
Well, that's exactly right, Mr. Mayor. I mean, you know, we can talk about these particular things, but we really don't have a baseline to measure at this point.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, we really want to, like I said, start collecting some real data on, and, and, and not only collecting it, but bringing it forward. I'm sure some data exists.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, you know, putting that in a cohesive form for you to be able to analyze and look at, and then, and then use that as a deciding, decision-making matrix, uh, uh, as a, you know, frankly, our decision-making, making ma- matrix, as far as I can tell, uh, in the time I've been here, is that we have a del- developer come in, we get a piece of, we get some money or a piece of property, and bam, we're, we're gonna use that to build something.
Right, okay.
And that's, and that frankly is part of why, you know, it's twenty-two point five percent, I believe, is what our current park and rec, uh, budget is compared to, uh, uh, the general fund as a whole. That is very high, uh, uh, but, you know, part of that is, is that, that philosophy that we've had in the past is, you know, we have it, we'll build it, and, you know, we just kinda wanna take a step back and analyze that a little more.
Counselor Lehman?
I wanna kinda go a little further. If we go back in time, there was a time, and you'll recall, uh, Jay might recall, there was a time where we actually had a, a park master plan, remember?
The circles.
With the circles. And when, when that went away, that's where this whole thing just started going to a different direction. And I don't know if that's the best approach, but what I can say from experience and history is that that approach worked better than what we're currently doing, okay? And it was kinda like the fire response.
Circles.
You know, where they, they have a map of the city and they, they put circles, and this circle is gonna represent, you know, this five or seven and a half mile area, and this circle's gonna represent this area.
Times, five minutes, three minutes.
And this is where we're gonna put, well, I'm talking about parks, but this is where we wanna park. If, if it's in this circle, we're gonna put a park here. And once they acquired land from a development for that park, the rest in that circle, we didn't take any land, we took the money, and then we used it to put the park on that land and put it in a fund for future, whatever. You know, and, and it, it had some rhyme and a reason, and you knew where there's gonna be parks and what area of the town it's gonna serve. And then we got into this, a tot lot here and a neighborhood park there and a tot lot here, and it's, you know, to, to me, a tot lot serves a neighborhood, a, a very small neighborhood. It's not usually a park that you and your family are gonna walk across the community to utilize. It's pretty much just for that exclusive neighborhood. A, you know, a community park or like, like, uh, Memorial or Tapa, something like that. These parks are like big community parks that are used from people all over the community. So, we've, I think you're right. I think we've gotta find, uh, some kind of matrix that makes sense, because you're right, what we have right now, it doesn't make any sense. And, uh, I, I, instead of spending hours debating each one of these projects, I would just assume, just hold this and let you guys kinda do, do some kind of a thought process for a couple of months and, and, uh, let us just kinda think about it too, you know?
Yeah, e- exactly, and that's, and that's kinda what we're asking. We're asking for a pause to be able to, to take a look at it in a little more detail and then come up with some options, uh, in general, and then take those options, and then we can start plugging individual things into those types of, uh, concepts.
Dre?
Mr. Mayor, you know, uh, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for any one of these projects here, but, you know, one thing is, we're gonna miss a construction season. That's a big deal. Um, I agree that maybe the planning process should be, uh, taken a look at. These parks do add value, and they're not all built out, and that's why it may cost more for some respects. Our city's not built out. We've talked about some of these before. We've actually pulled back on phase three on Quarry Lake. We have had some conversations and emails about, uh, some part partnerships that I mentioned earlier. You know, I don't think waiting some time on that issue is a big deal. I, we're already through halfway through the winter, or more, more through the winter now. So, if this is, doesn't get done this year, I don't think it's a huge deal. I would, I would like to take one of them. I think we, we, we missed the boat if we don't at least take a look at one of these projects. And I would suggest we continue on with the project of phase two on Quarry Lake. I think that's something we can get done this construction season, uh, that does add value. That is a, an amazing piece of property that we can't do anything else with right now. It can't be sold, it can't be taken out of parkland status. Uh, I, I think we continue on with that project and maybe put the other ones on hold, and, but, look at our, our process and, uh, move forward with, uh, making adjustments to that process. The other concern I had. The other concern I have is, we don't have our park director here tonight. That's a problem for me. We're not here, we're hearing the argument from the other parts of the staff, but we're not hearing it from the parks director. We haven't sent it back to Park and Rec Committee. That's an issue for me. I think that's, that's someone trying to lord over the system. We talked about this project, these, all three of these projects last year. This is in the plan, you know, I think it might not have passed with five to zero vote, but this was on our list, it was to get done this summer. Now we're putting it back again? That, to me, doesn't make sense. That, I have a problem with that.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, you know, you're talking about building something new when we've got a building that ended up being torn down a year ago and needs replacement. You know, do we maintain or, you know, I guess I call that maintenance when the building was basically nonusable and needed to be replaced. So, the other question I have for staff was, I remember seeing an email about a court decision on park dedication fees, and if memory serves me, the new developments, park dedication fees are supposed to stay with the development?
We don't know, we'll see how that shakes out.
Yeah, it wasn't dealing with park development, but-
Developmental fee.
Developmental fees in general. And we're waiting to see what the Minnesota Supreme Court is going to decide on that particular issue, but it certainly is something that causes us pause, because, you know, if it comes down and the court says that any developmental fee that is extracted from a developer has to be tied to that particular development, that will totally change the way we have done business. And not only us, but many other communities as well. So, that is an issue that we have to continue to watch.
And look at, Mike?
Well, just to go back to the Warming House deal, you know, a little further on here, I'm sure we're going to talk about the fact that we have a civic group that's looking to, you know, do us a great favor is the way I see it. I mean, they want to partner with us and help pay for this thing and help build it. I think, you know, turning that down would be very, be a very negative look upon what we're trying to do here.
Well, and to be clear, you know, we're not looking to turn down anything. The reason we brought these projects forward to Councilor Whiting's concerns is that I'm not sure we had that direction, and if we had it, we missed it. And so, the whole point was to say, okay, here are three projects that, and it's sort of, Memorial Bridge is in the same one as well, but we're still trying to get our arms around whether or not we even have a valid, or if we can get a better price point for that particular structure. And so, as opposed to staff moving in a way that, you know, we get out on the ledge and we look back and council says, no, that's not what we are looking to do, the whole point of bringing this forward was to get some clarity. So, you know, we need that as staff. If ever, you know, we're in a position where we're not comfortable making a decision because we don't have good clarity from this body, you know, I hope we will always have the opportunity to come back and say, okay, here's the deal, we're not sure, can you remind us what's your thought process? Can you tell us what you want here?
Kathy?
I think I'm going to go back to something that Jay said, and I know his concern is that our park director isn't here and that we don't have park board input, but if you actually look back on our work plan for 2017, we also talked about using our committees better. And this is our opportunity to let our park board know what we want as a council. They have brought projects forward and we have turned them down so many times this last year, and I'm going to say Quarry Lake was one of them. It's a large chunk of change, it's going to be a lot of what we have in our park asset, and I think that's why it's been that project that has held us back. Now, as far as the Warming House, those are, with the partnerships, I think those are things that maybe we could look at going forward, but I think the reality is we have to get our hands around this process, and that's what we don't have right now. We do not have a process that we are comfortable moving forward with and really can be transparent and communicate well to the community.
So-
Let me follow up since I've been sitting here quiet. And I actually agree with Councilor Mokel on everything she said, but I'm going to kind of go off a little bit differently. When I look at the ice arena, the first thing that popped in my mind was, or the sheet of ice at Lyons Park was, you know, we just built state-of-the-art two sheets of ice and now within a couple of blocks away, you want to put another outdoor sheet of ice. It's like, why? Why would we do that? Okay? And if you, if you build this ice, it drives a need for the building for the Zamboni. And who's actually going to use this ice? Okay? We've got Holmes Park, Hiawatha Park, used to get flooded, no board drainage, not a lot of people are outside skating. I mean, they're just not, you know? I used to when I was a kid.
Same, have I never seen?
Right? But it's, it's just not what it used to be. And it's kind of weird because we're a state, kind of like, what's his name, Neil Broton, you know? You think of him and his hockey NHL career, outdoors, always outdoors, way up north, always really cold. It's just a different, it's kind of like these trends, and this trend is gone and now they all want to be in a nice, warm, heated place with all the bells and whistles. And, you know, the other thing we're not thinking about, which goes back to Councilor Mokel, is if we build this, can you tell me what it's going to cost us to operate it, what it's going to cost us to maintain it, and what the future capital outlay is?
The answer is currently no, and that's exactly what we have to try to figure out.
Right. Quarry Lake, I've been clear on the whole time, I think it's an extremely poor location for that kind of money to be spent. I do, I think it's a poor location. I've asked a lot of people in Shockley, do you know where Quarry Lake is? Nobody knows where it's at. We're talking about putting a huge amount of money into something nobody can find.
Well, that's, they're part of our communication issue too.
Well, you know, the reason to spend money isn't to say, we're going to help teach you where we're spending your money. No, that's not the way to spend their money. You know, there's a lot of great assets to Quarry Lake, don't get me wrong. You know, I've, originally, the original agreement we had with the hockey, the water ski club out there, I agreed with that original agreement. The original agreement was a good agreement, and I still believe that to this day. It was, they were going to raise some funds, we were going to build access into it, maybe a gravel parking lot, they can pay to build the ramp to get their boats in and out, we'll give them exclusive rights to have their shows there, we'll put a little shelter on it, maybe a barbecue grill, and maybe a bathroom like our template that we used at Hiawatha and Holmes and some of these other parks. And that was the extent of it, and somehow between that original agreement and today, it morphed into something that's going to cost way too much money. And it morphed into it's going to be a wedding center and all kinds of, you know? And I don't, I don't agree with that concept. You know, I don't have a problem with DNR stocking it and people fishing and doing passive uses out there. I think it's kind of a nice area if you want to take the trail up through the Energy XL Woods and stuff. I don't have a problem with that portion of it, I just have a problem with putting that kind of money into something and not knowing where you're at.
I mean, you know, I think that's the issue, and I agree with a lot of what you've
said. I think we need to have that conversation with the water ski club and say, hey, we're putting this investment in, where's, I'd love to renegotiate that contract with them, to be honest with you. We do have an asset there, it's an amazing asset. The hockey one, you know, I think that can, that could take some time to discuss and kind of look at that, along with the Warming House portion of that. But here, we did have, and I think it was on the CIP that we talked about last year when we made that decision to go ahead with phase two, we took back phase three and held off of that because it was so expensive.
Yeah, and I voted against phase two, so.
But you did, and I agree with that. But, you know, here we got a park that we've already invested money in and we're going to do it halfway?
Well, you need access, even if it's a passive.
We have access, we have a parking lot, you can get in there and use it, but we have no amenities. And to me, why would we waste the first part of the money if we're not going to finish at least a portion of the second part?
I was against wasting the money to be good.
All right, all right. Well, I'm just saying, I think it's time to go to phase two.
Pull it back in here a little bit. Thank you all, everybody. Mike?
Well, just Quarry Lake, you know, if we do build that out to what has been expressed by some people, we're going to need more staff. I mean, if you're going to have somebody renting that for weddings, there's going to have to be somebody taking care of the schedule.
We're not talking about phase three, though.
No, no, I'm just saying, if you're going to do the whole thing that's been spoken about, you're going to be adding staff, probably more than one.
All right. Lot of good discussion here. I think we're talking about individual projects, but we're also talking policy and big picture analytics. And I think, I think we got to put some more analytics in it. We talked about our park board bringing projects forward that we make monetary decisions on, and that's a preview of the council. Some of those bids were higher than what we had anticipated. It's, it doesn't mean you're not for parks and et cetera. Just a month ago, the Park and Rec Board was discussing a third sheet of ice building behind, right behind the community center. A while back, we talked about better directions to our boards, and maybe that's kind of on us as a council. But if, if we have a Park and Rec Board that is thinking long-term and thinking about adding another sheet of ice in a new building behind the community center, I look at it and go, when I think big picture of parks, one thing that hits me is, because I'm a money guy, is twenty-two percent of our budget, higher than streets, higher than public works. We as a community have spent a lot on parks and recs over the last several years. I do believe we need, should take a pause and take stock of what we have learned and learn more about our uses and our costs, and on replacement costs and possibly new things before we move forward. And in regard to these two parks or two projects, they have been in the works a little bit, yes, does it sound like a great public-private partnership? Maybe. Same with Emerson has pledged some money for that building, right? Three million dollar budget, something like that for the building, they'll put five hundred. Someone told me a long time ago that when you have donors and they're happy to give you some money and build a building or part of a building or contribute, then put their name on it. And those donors are important to a community, don't get me wrong, but the long-term effect is, who is going to pay for the long-term maintenance and replacement of anything with that building or project? And that as a council and as a city, that we go on forever at those costs. We're seeing, we want new things and we've gotten some, but some of our old things and the replacement are getting expensive and need to be done too. So, we're not anti-park, we're not saying no at this time. I think we should take a pause and get better analytics of costs, use, and that will actually help us define how we move forward. And if the costs and usage and analytics prove out some of these projects that are before us now or later, I think that'll help our decision-making process.
Mayor, I agree with you, and I'm going to spin it just a little bit differently. I'm going to say that if you're not careful, it is possible that you could take on too much and cause detriment to what you already have.
I think we've done that.
And, well, I don't think we've done it to a point to where, well, we have done it to a point to where we need to take a step back and make sure that we're not doing too much damage. So, you know, there does come a point where it's not, no different than a household. You can go out and party and come home and find out you can't make your house payment now. We got to make sure we don't do that.
We're not there yet.
All right.
Well, how much is in a park reserve?
So, would we have enough consensus on this board to take a pause, let staff do some analysis, analytic study, maybe bring the circles back? Maybe this employs some of the Park and Rec Board for some direction, at least on a piece of it? Kathy?
I was just going to ask timeline maybe, what the staff thinks, how much time they need.
Well, that's an excellent question.
We might see it in pieces.
Start with six months?
Well, you know, I think it's going to take some time. Six months would generally be, you know, I, why don't we do this? Why don't, why don't we give you regular updates on our progress and then, you know, as we start getting a little closer, I don't want to just say six months and then us not be able to do that, but I'll-
How about an update by the end of April?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yep.
At least that'd be a marker.
And by, and by the end of April, we'll certainly have an idea of how much time we're looking at here. I don't see this as, I mean, this is a lot of, this is going to take some time, but it's not anything that we can't do, and so.
But it's pieces, I think. I think you're going to break it up into pieces and you're going to look at, you know, one piece would be, what services are we providing and what's the usage and stuff? That's a piece that's probably going to be on the backend, because that's going to be an ongoing thing, I would think.
And don't forget that, you know, it's more than just, you know, the park staff proper. Everything we build, we have to mow and make sure it's painted and replace the windows when they're shot out, you know, and all that kind of stuff, and so.
And I think that was my understanding of where you needed to take a step back is getting more, multiple departments involved in this process instead of the process that we have right now.
You know, just on this big, big picture stuff, even if we didn't build one new thing, if you watch the grown-out communities, the Golden Valleys, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Rosevilles, you would be amazed to see the amount of dollars that they're spending and/or would ideally like to have just on park replacement, because their stuff's old, it hasn't been, they haven't been saving. St. Paul said it costs ten million dollars a year for twenty years.
And St. Paul is a perfect example.
Huh?
St. Paul is a perfect example of a park system that, you know, really almost imploded last year because of the lack of the ability to replace what they need to replace. And never forget, we swallowed the pig. We built everything, you know, relatively speaking, quickly, within a very small window when it comes to a construction-type concept. And so, as that pig's going down the python, there's going to need to be a new pig at the beginning that needs, you know, when we have to replace everything. And, you know, that's, that may be, and I'm sure it will be, long before the majority of us are still here, but we have, constantly have to keep that in mind, that everything we build, we have to replace, and if we replace it, it's, you're looking at three times the initial cost, not to mention all the other upkeep, so, anyway.
Enough clear direction to staff?
Well, I agree with the process of putting it all together, but I disagree with shelving some of these projects. Mr. Loos talked about the partnerships that we'll be pushing off, you know, to me, it's short-sighted. We're going to miss a construction season on the Quarry Lake Park trails, which do, you know, there's some, there's some process to keeping that up, but we also have a park asset fund too that's there to maintain some of this stuff. We have a capital improvement projects, but we also have the park asset fund. And to me, that, these are different animals, so the park asset fund takes care of some of those projects, or supposed to. The capital improvement process for parks is to build or to enhance or to acquire. So, I think we're missing the boat here, we're missing a season, we're throwing away some partnerships. These all add value, and when people come to Shockley and say, you know, they talked about it, but then they, they put it on the back burner. To me, that's, you know, we've had this capital improvement plan in place for, you know, I think it's a five-year plan, I think it goes out farther, but we focus on it for a five-year deal. This was coming up this year. This should, this should be taken care of. We've talked about this for the past five years. This is short-sighted, I think, I don't agree with it.
You got a comment?
Well, I appreciate your concerns, Councilor Whiting, but nothing's being shelved. What we're doing is we're taking a pause to take a look at it and make decisions based upon data.
It's being shelved because we're missing the whole construction season, so it won't be happening this year.
Well, that's, with all due respect, that's one season with something that, when we build, may be around for forty years. that, when we build, may be around for forty years. So, you know, all we're asking is to take some time to make sure that what we build is what you want built.
It has been.
And you can still use Quarry Lake, you can walk around it all you want, there's just not a defined place for you to walk. You can walk zigzags if it makes you happy, or you can go in circles, or you go straight.
I, I'm not gonna say we're missing anything, I think these, these projects are, are still there, maybe the partnerships will get stronger, maybe the analytics will prove that, that we're justified in what we're doing, or show a way forward. Good things take a long time, and are worth waiting for if, if there's a big need for it. So, I, I think we've built enough consensus, and consensus doesn't necessarily mean we all agree, but I think there's a majority, and I so noted are your strong comments and thoughts on these two projects. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you all. Now, we would like to move to five, five A.
Let's, can we take a short recess first?
Okay, and we have a...
Motion for a recess.
Motion for...
Should we move into it, or should we recess first?
I was gonna say recess first, because this, we're gonna go into a closed session.
All right, we have a second, and I guess no discussion on these breaks, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we stand in recess. Thank you all.